Okay, it's 5:00 o'clock. We're gonna open our meeting. This is the zoning meeting for a variance. Is that what it's called?
Yeah, well, not a variance, but a...
Rezone.
What is it?
The rezoning.
Proposed change to properties from residential to commercial zoning status. With, for a conditional use permit?
Conditional use?
Yep, okay. So, um, last time when we were mistakenly having the meeting, we had, um...
You're welcome.
Donna and Mike Ramon were here, and they, um, you were here, present? You were present? You were present. David, you were present? You were not, and you weren't, but Pam was, and I was, and so we listened to her concerns. So we all know where that is. She can't be here tonight because she has COVID. So, um, I got a letter from Judy Shelton. Um, did you read it? You weren't here, okay. Oh, yes, excuse me, we do, don't we? We're gonna open the, no, I did.
Oh, we did?
Another public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. We're gonna open the public hearing. Welcome to our guest, TJ. I'm sorry.
I'm Cory.
Cory.
I'm Marcia Yelcom, Donna's neighbor.
Okay, so you live down in that area also?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm sorry if we're opening now. And so this is a letter from one of the residents there. Do we have to read this out loud, or no? Let me just put it, okay. So, we'll open it up if anybody has anything to say. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, TJ, do you wanna tell us what your thoughts are?
Sure. Um, the reason why I wanna buy the lots is because I'm, uh, we just moved back to St. John. I just bought a house, we just bought a house north of those lots on Monroe Street, and I'm wanting to start a used car and truck lot.
Okay, on these proposed properties?
Yep.
Okay. And that's why you're requesting the change?
When you say truck lot, what do you, what do you mean in truck?
Like pickups.
Okay, like pickup cars.
So what else would be considered used vehicle or used for the car lot or truck lot? What, what other items could that be? Could that be a trailer house? Could it be a boat? Could it be camper, or?
No, mainly just wanting to do automotive pickups, like enclosed trailers, some farm trailers, things like that, farm equipment and things like that.
So typical, what I, maybe, I won't say typical, that's not a good word, for used vehicle lot, so that would encompass quite a few things potentially?
Yes.
Um, like you said, trailers, uh, what about equipment and stuff like that?
Yep, when I say equipment, I'm talking like, things people can use on farms and...
Well, we're talking big equipment, we're not talking tractor, combine, anything that size.
Right, right.
Okay.
And you're wanting to put a building up too?
Um, yes, that's the plan.
What size would that be?
I haven't figured out how big a building I wanna put up yet.
So we don't know what that would consist of yet, uh, what the building would be?
Correct.
Okay, so would there be, are you looking, thinking about a shop inside the building for?
Yeah, I'm thinking more towards like, uh, somewhere I can have my office, and then a place big enough that I could, you know, pull a couple vehicles at a time and, and work on them and things like that.
So how do you go about getting started with that as far as, I've got five trucks I know I've got, or I have certain equipment already have lined up? And I'm just curious how you kinda get started in that type of business.
Well, the first thing I have to do is get some commercial property to even obtain my license.
Okay, and typically what's a license take to get the license?
Uh, probably a couple months, but with COVID and everything, it's...
Does that come from the state?
Yep.
Okay, so is that through Department of Motor Vehicles? Where's that come from?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like, how many vehicles are you talking at a time down? I mean, equipment, like farm equipment, we, I mean, five tractors, this, heavy cars, or?
Eventually, I'd like to get 10 or 15 items at a time, probably. Obviously, getting started, it's not gonna be near that many, but...
Right, yeah. What do you anticipate about traffic in and out of there, coming through, or?
See, that's, uh, I don't anticipate a lot of, uh, traffic, and the reason why, you know, I've been asked more than once, why wouldn't you just want it on the highway? The reason for that is because most things sell online anymore. So I don't see an issue with that, and as far as I'm concerned, the people that are gonna be coming to look to see what I have are people that are most likely already contacting me, and they're coming to see what's, what's available. So I don't anticipate lots of truck and car traffic.
So, so you get the zone, rezone, or whatever. Build a building, and say, two, three years down the line, and don't work out, then what, what would be doing with the property at that point?
Um, I'm still gonna keep the property, um, because I just, I live right down the street, so, um, it's got that, there's a little shed there on the far south property. I can't remember if there's two addresses there, which one it is, but...
Yeah, it's two different lots.
I'm, uh, I'm also wanting to use that, um, building currently because where I bought, where we bought our house, there's not a big enough garage to park all my mowers and stuff in.
Is there anything on that, Jamie, about, was fencing involved with that at all? I mean, is there something that's required?
You guys can put those stipulations on it. I know, uh, when Clausens went through, I was not here, um, I think that was right when I, about the time I started. Um, when Clausens got their building, you, uh, the zoning board had required, um, a fence around the...
Because he was gonna store vehicles outside.
Yeah, right.
So then who, who's left to enforce that, Jamie, if, if something's not in compliance? Who?
Me, I guess.
No.
Yeah, I mean, if it's...
This has been an issue for a long time. Nobody knows who enforces the rules of the...
Yeah, it's, I know, I mean, we haven't done a lot of the zoning stuff. I mean, we had the one issue with the fence down there, and I tried to do what I could.
But the city council has the final say.
Right, so, um...
So do you, do you have a, I mean, maybe have an idea or a plan? Do you need, or anything on paper that shows what the building would look like, what the property would look like, on and off the street, and things like that?
Uh, no, I don't.
So you're waiting to file for the licensing if this, if this works out or something at that point, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the south, the south lot that runs, where the little building is in the trailer, that whole half block or whatever we call it, right? That's where you're wanting to put your business?
Yes.
Okay, then you come back across the street, and we have Judy, Judy Shelton, right? On the corner, and then the lot behind, or that section behind it, are you wanting, is he buying that too? And what, what are, what's your plans for that, if we rezone it?
So the one behind it, or which would be the...
It's to the north.
To the north.
Not the trailer house, the two lots together, but the one to the north of that.
Okay, on the north side?
Yeah, that half block, yeah.
Okay, so what I wanted, wanted to do, so where that junky trailer's at, is take the trailer out?
Right.
Um, and put a building where, um, the electric and sewer and everything's already at, and then, um, probably use that lot area to park like my trailers and trucks and things like that, and across the street, I was wanting to, um, park my inventory.
Okay, so the inventory's gonna be on the half lot, that's...
The north half.
The north half, and then you're wanting to just use that other for your personal outside storage stuff?
And the building, and, yeah.
Okay.
And I wanna redo that little shed, and put a new roof on it, and paint it, and things like that, and make it look nice.
So fencing from the street or something, uh, could be a real possibility, yeah.
Yeah, and, and a lot of it...
Make a bit a little bit with privacy.
Right, and a lot of the code, it does say that there's no outside storage, so...
Right.
Having the fence would help with that.
Do you, would you like to speak, Marcia?
I have, Donna sent me notes on what she said last time, and I can, uh, tell you those if you want me to. Okay, and then I also have a question about the lot that's across the street from where the trailer house is, is an actual, on the actual block of houses, right?
Right, that's...
That's residential. Why would you ever...
They're both residential.
I know that, that they both are, but at least that one's like over by the mill, you know? And not right next to somebody's house, or right behind somebody's house. Okay, sorry. Let's get back to this. It, she says it should stay residential because we don't live in a commercial zoned area. I would say that it messes up the value of our houses, which I believe to be true. If you, if you have a place that's commercial right in the same block or next, you know, to your block, it's going to affect your value of your home. Um, it could be noisy, and nobody's just gonna wanna buy your house. She said the road maintenance was an issue that she brought up. Um, traffic of unknown people coming from out of town at different hours of the day. She pointed out that there are three, basically three single women. She's not single, but her husband's gone all the time. So basically, three single women living on that block. And I guess I didn't know this, but she said that you have had some problems with theft in town, and that this would be even worse if we had a lot of out-of-town traffic. I do know that the police came to my house about six months ago and asked if I had any cameras because they had had a problem with some theft across the street. At, and I think where you live in the little yellow house?
Is it?
Yeah, they had had some problem over there before you moved in, I'm assuming, because that's been a long time.
We just moved this week.
But I didn't have, I didn't have a camera, so I wasn't very helpful. In the last one, point she made, she said was they wanted to do a special assessment, which means that it'll still be zoned for residential, but used for commercial. I agree, the problem with that is the city doesn't back any of the zoning committee's items. So who's gonna enforce the rules, which you already talked about there, so...
One thing I know we talked about, um, which we're gonna put cameras at our house too, just because security-wise, but we also talked about putting cameras. It was turned over to TJ to put cameras down there for security. Where we live, two blocks away, if something's going on, it's not very hard for us to get there. We're literally, I think, two blocks from it, so we did talk about fencing and cameras.
I do know the county had, somebody's, I don't know, I don't know, I should've went and got, but the county did, somebody's wanting to put a trailer business in Stafford County, and, I don't know.
That was out in the rural?
Out in the rural community, and they were worried about traffic flow and all that too, at that point, and the commissioners did reject that. Also, just due with the, something to do with the flow of traffic, but I can't remember. I should've went and checked that out.
It's been a while back.
Yeah, it's been a while back.
We were told, but I don't know, I wasn't in on that either, so...
We do have a problem with the road at the corner, right at the corner where my property is. It's that big dip where the water all goes in, and the road, I don't know. I think the water maybe is, it hurts the road, I think, or the maintenance just hasn't been kept up, but it's getting pretty bad there, and if we have bigger trucks and trailers and stuff coming in, it's gonna be an even bigger issue. So, and then Donna's talking about the dirt road that's in front of the property, and how much problem that might possibly be for the county or the city. I don't know, who takes care of that road?
Ohio, yeah.
First.
It's the cities, but we have an agreement with Ohio Township that maintains it.
Does anybody have any further questions for anybody?
Donna said she would definitely be available if you have any questions that, you know, or if I had any questions that I needed or help with, but...
Do you have anything, David, since you live down there?
Yeah, Scott, Naomi Clausen, David, Martha Cutright, no change.
You want it left the way it is? That would be your, okay.
And I did go around and talk to some of the neighbors in the area. One lady said that she didn't care either way, but the other three I talked to, they said they really didn't want it zoned any other way.
Well, we're not rezoning it.
Well, I mean, what, yeah.
Making the changes.
Making the changes.
I have a, another question. When I put my garage in, they sent out letters to, I don't know, two or three blocks around, asking if it was okay if I built the garage. Why did I not ever get a letter saying, I didn't know?
It's 200 feet, you're in the 200 feet.
You're just outside.
I'm just outside?
Yeah, because it's from the center of the property, right?
I actually measured from the edge of the property.
Oh, okay.
Just, just to be safe.
I go from the edge.
The only way I knew about it was that because Donna happened to be...
No, I go from the edge just in case someone says, "Take that."
Right, right, and I did go, I, I did go outside the 200 feet. I went around the neighborhood, and I talked to not everybody, because with the COVID, I didn't know who wanted to answer their door and who didn't want to answer their door.
Do you guys have anything? The way Jamie can help here, but we just make a recommendation to the city council. Jamie presents it, or, I don't know.
Well, now it's different because Land Bank moved from city council, so I have to go from here to Land Bank to city council, I think.
Okay, well, anyway, whatever we, we recommend is only, it's presented to the Land Bank and the council, and then the final decision lies with them, if I understand it right.
That's right, I understand it.
So, and the next council meeting's next, a week from tonight, so...
So...
That's when it should be, would be presented, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so we're gonna close this part of the public hearing, if y'all are done speaking, okay?
You got anything else you want?
She stated that the north part was also, um, where the housing is. And, you know, if I had to just do everything on the south lot, which is borderline with the co-op, where there's a bunch of trucks anyway, I, you know, would have no problem. That's a pretty good-sized lot anyway, down there, on just the south side. Run, just doing everything on that, that lot right there, on that one lot, so... So it wouldn't affect the bordering neighbors on, around the, the north lot if, if that's...
At harvest time, the trucks from the co-op go down one street, across, and then back another. They do not come down right, our streets don't.
Also, I, I will be hauling all the vehicles or whatever in with my pickup and trailer, so there's not gonna be outside trucks and things coming in, so, and, yeah, I have no problem coming in from the south side by the co-op, coming in from the south side of town, so...
Appreciate that. Anything else, anybody? Okay, then we'll close the public part of the meeting. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do any of you have a feeling one way or another, or any, can we discuss?
My only concern is with the big equipment, like disc and tractors and being there in the city, in the city limits.
I just think you wind up with another lot, you got a whole bunch of stuff parked on it, and some of it may move, and some of it may not, and then you've got a shop going in there working, and now you gotta get your equipment ready, or your vehicles ready for sale, and whatever, but I don't know. Seems like you got a lot of things coming and going.
I'm, I'm more with him on just having it on one lot and not on the residential side, because the co-ops are already on the south lots. They'd be backing up. And I don't know if Goodwin would build her house next to that mass, but...
I, I just don't think, I mean, I think we can make a, maybe make a recommendation, but he has to, if we make a recommendation that, yeah, this certain lot, but he still has to get licensed or permitted.
Right.
And I don't know how long that takes with everything. I think we would wanna see a drawing of what it's gonna look like. I think that even calls for it in here somewhere. So I, I just, I think there's a lot of steps yet that have to happen before. And maybe the city would just say, well, we're, we're good with giving them whatever, and then we'll see what happens, and then we know how some of that goes sometimes. Things don't get done that are gonna get done, but we can't control that.
Because, I mean, I know we had an issue over here on the west side of town. We zoned it, and then they came in before the city council members and rezoned it different, right? Like at Marshall's, where we had put in there, they can't keep, you can't keep tires and all that crap out front, the stuff out front, and then they rezoned it different. Am I right?
No, he put in a rezoning request.
Yeah, I know he did, but then when it went to the city council, they changed it, didn't they? They didn't...
They go with a C2 or C...
It was industrial, I think, if I'm right.
They switched it to industrial.
But it, but it never got cleaned out.
No, it looks like crap over there now.
Basically, him going to industrial allows it to be out there.
Yeah, but we put stipulations. Yes, we did. The city didn't approve it then. Because we put stipulations, he had to keep it cleaned up. We did.
Because that was a concern.
Yeah, it was a concern.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you've got a young couple...
Wanting to put a business.
Come back here, wanting to, to do something positive. I, I think that's, that's good. It's just, excuse me, I have a cold, I don't have COVID.
I know, I feel like we all should have our masks on.
But anyway, I, I do appreciate that, and I hate to discourage that, but I just, I just think there's a few more steps that need to be done. I don't, I don't know if, if I was making a recommendation, that that would be not...
I'm more for a car lot, no big equipment.
How do you control that?
I know, if you, I don't think we need industrial equipment and semis and tractors and...
And that's what he does, though.
I know.
And that's what will be parked down there.
I just don't feel like that's what we need in St. John, in the residential area.
But it's under the guise of a used car lot, right? That's what he's saying he wants.
Well, he started out as a used car lot, and then it went to heavy equipment and farm equipment and trucks.
So how does that change, in your view, or does it change anything?
Are you asking my opinion? I think we have a housing problem, and we have a residential area that has opportunity and potential for someone to build possibly a house.
There, rather than...
So, I mean, I, I'm all for businesses and growth. I am 100% behind all of that, but we can have 10 businesses with 10 available jobs.
No place to live.
But no place to live, no one's gonna be able to fill those jobs, so... I see a lot of different aspects on it. I'm with you, though, and even if a young couple trying to come back to town and, and do something, I, I do think the cart's before the horse, and there needs to be maybe more...
Does he drive a truck?
I think he's a truck driver.
I thought he sold insurance.
Yeah, I think he sold...
Did he tell us last time?
I thought he quit truck driving and started selling insurance, I thought it was...
I don't, I can't, I can't. I personally feel like we really need to take into consideration what the neighbors, how we would feel if we were, if that was us down there, I mean...
Well, I know the, I know the, the county commissioners, that was a one-year use on that trailer sale, so that's all he wanted was a one-year use, and they didn't approve it.
Because the neighbors didn't want it?
Yeah, I don't know, I needed, I should've went to the courthouse and found out the whole. But it was out in the, it was out on the highway, and they didn't want it, something to do with the traffic flow is the reason they were concerned. And I just don't feel like we got enough traffic down there with the elevator. It's kinda limited to the south road down there by whatever, what's that street?
H-O-O-L-E?
I call it Hooley.
Okay, Hooley or Hoole, what, is that how it's pronounced, David, do you know?
Hooley.
Hooley, okay, you pronounce it right then.
Well, he wouldn't be able to put very much onto lots anyway, so...
No, if he's gonna put, if he's put a shop on it.
A shop in, because a shop takes almost the whole lot up. I mean, look at my house. The lot's almost gone. Well, you'd only be able to fit maybe five cars and, and a piece of equipment there.
But how do we regu, how, I mean, if we approve these changes, I mean, is that how we would say it? Proposed change of the properties, do we put a stipulation on the time? Do we put a stipulation on, he could only have this and this, and then, then it goes right there?
Doesn't all this info have to be filled out?
No, that's mine.
And that's yours?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a whole lot of stuff there.
I'm not gonna answer all those questions.
But, but you're saying like, a drawing of what he's...
Well, I think, yeah, I think, you know, some type of, the drawing or, or plans of what they want, what...
I just don't think that...
What do you wanna, what do you wanna have?
I don't think we can put time stipulations on it, but I don't think he knows.
I would agree with that.
But he can't, but he can't apply for the permits until...
Right, I'm just saying that you go along and you, and you agree to do that, you make a recommendation, but as part of the recommendation, within a certain timeframe, that has to be fenced, or the building has to be erected, or...
And then what happens when it doesn't? And Jamie goes down there and says, "You're out of your time zone, you haven't done what you're supposed to." She presents it to him, and then what happens?
Well, this is gonna be a touchy situation, though, because it's the land bank that owns it.
Well, that's the other thing I was gonna ask you, what can you fill us in there?
So, yeah, because, and that's, that's partially, um, you know, the land bank has been doing a lot of work this last year or two with trying to acquire those properties and the dilapidated houses, and tearing them down and making them accessible to other people, and that's why we sell the lots for $300, you know? So the land bank can even put stipulations on what they wanna see. And the way that I understand it, it can be reverted back to the land bank if those stipulations aren't met.
So wouldn't it be good to know, or for us to know, what some of those stipulations or regulations are?
That's us.
So, the land bank doesn't have any criteria?
It's complicated because the land...
We don't know what he's getting for permits either.
Right, well, then the land bank technically owns it, but he doesn't want it unless he can do this.
But you're saying the land bank can take it back, so how do they take it back if they don't know what the... I mean, because we say, okay, we want a fence within six months.
Well, they would just approve that, and then that would be in this, like, the land bank doesn't wanna sell it without those stipulations known, so they can...
But we don't know if he's even gonna get the permit.
Right, that's why she's saying it's a very, there's so many hoops, so many what ifs.
So we can put all these regulations on, then if he don't get the permits. So would it have to come back and re, would it stay commercial, or would it go back to residential?
Well, it's always gonna be residential, it's not moving to commercial.
See, that's where I get confused on that. So even though he puts a building there in a car lot, it's still considered residential?
It's just a special use, conditional use.
Special use permit, or whatever. What do you think? Who's on first?
So, you guys got an opinion on? I mean, I hate, I hate for a young couple, like you said, to come back, want to start a business. But I don't think a residential area is the place to do it.
I just feel like there's so many unknowns that it's gonna, I mean.
It's just going to stick there.
It's going to just, right? And then even though we put all these stipulations, there's always going to be the, well, I mean, not always. I take that back, there could be, well, I'm waiting on this permit. I can't do this till I do this. And I just feel like there's too many unknowns.
I mean, and Judy Shelton, she has her grandkids a lot, I mean, whether it could be her grandkids or her great grand.
Well, it'd be her.
Nieces and nieces. A lot down there and a lot of traffic.
Mark, do you have anything?
Well, yeah, well, I just think that there could be a better place for that, but I don't know. Maybe you need to talk to cousin Kevin out there and put it out in the interrogation thing or something.
Oh, yeah.
Be on the highway.
I think you'd be better on the highway anyways, having traffic come by and see it.
I mean, if somebody has any other discussion, concerns.
So do we make a recommendation?
I will make a motion that we don't accept the.
Provisions?
Provisions, just do the, felt like farm equipment and big trucks down there. Then what neighbors I've talked to did not, did not want that in their neighborhood. More, more than, I had one, only one person that wanted, did say she didn't care. The rest of them didn't want it in their neighborhood. And the letter we got and other neighbors that we've talked, you know, concerns, I just feel like it's not. I think we need to leave residential for housing. I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second to leave it the way it is? Motion made by Alvin, seconded by Craig, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, five, done, nothing. Okay, so then now, okay, so now, any other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.